You know, it is absolutely moronic. What has transpired in that city council and you can tell by watching it, this is just my opinion, my opinion only. That you can tell there's strife. Between all of them, I mean.
Who's, who's leading things there? Is it Prashlak? I mean, from just by watching it, I'm like.
Leading things, I mean, Prashlak is. You know, probably the most articulate and knowledgeable. Person on the council and I say that because of his background on other boards and commissions.
His dad was mayor with me or something?
Dad was mayor and all that, but again, I don't, I don't think that has anything to do with it. I think it's the fact that he's done his. Homework, he's, he's. Raised his hand in the community and has volunteered and has done an admirable job and it's like. You know, that's what you want to see in these aldermen and you know. You know, he's kind of the. You know, the, the voice of reason in my opinion on that council because it's, he brings that knowledge. To the table and you can tell he's pissed off too. I mean, it's.
And then.
It's crazy what is going on there.
Well, if anybody's trying to figure out who to vote for, cause look voter turnout isn't that great, but for the people that, that do. That give a crap. Eileen Looby, I don't know what she's doing. She just does what Melanie tells her to do, I guess.
She's, she's, yeah, I'm sure she's, you know, like all of them. I mean, let's not, let's be honest. I mean, all of them. Have some innate desire to be mayor. I mean, that's just the.
Well, it's definitely.
I think it's the push of every alderman. I mean, it, you know, when, when I was going through the caucus process, I mean, you're asked what you want to be. What you want to do for the community and you know. So, and it's nothing wrong with that, but I mean, just uh. When it starts to impact how the city operates, that's when it gets. And, and voter turnout. You know how this works, Pete? It's not voter, really voter turnout. It's, it's the, it's the caucus. They're the ones that pushed the candidate through. I mean, they should be, you know, instead of just rubber stamping these aldermen. You know, because they're aldermen. They should be asking. What, what have you done? You know, there's a reason why they have, that's like the term limits, you know, you talk term limits, we have term limits. And all our. People and you know, they're required to come through the caucus again, when their term is up or their two-year term, and then they're going to get. Re-up for the next one. You know, you sat in there on those things, the questions that are asked, if there are any questions asked at all.
Not even their beach balls.
I, I mean, they should be asking them, you know, what, what did you do in the last two years and why should you be?
Why did you get us a lawsuit? That's number one.
You know, and, and they, these caucus members should be asking the tough questions. They should be going and saying, hey, listen, I was at this one. Council meeting and you know. You didn't have a opinion on something. That's not what we voted for. Why, why did you choose, you know, it's stuff like that. Now like, hey, God, we love you. You did a great job. Congratulations, you're, we're moving you through. But then when someone is. You know, an outside, you know, let's say the alder, and there's an open alderman spot, right?
Yeah.
That person gets fricking. Torched. You know, or, or you don't even get considered when you're even, you know. More vastly qualified than anyone else. It's just, it's just a crazy. Uh, process that, you know, but these aldermen that are coming up for their second, third term, whatever.
Yeah.
The caucus, it's not the voters. Yeah, the voters don't turn on it, you know, it's, that's, that's just a byproduct.
You got, you got a point. You got a strong point. And I guess like. Look, the alderman won't come on the show, so we have to make, at least I have to make my judgments of what I see. And I watch the show.
Like everyone does.
Like everyone does. So, so you got Looby just doing whatever Melanie says. You got Jed, who is, I, I guess a nice guy, but. He just. Does he overanalyze things that throw a wrench in? Cause it seems like he, he does something at every. Event. That gives. Fodder to those three to slow things down. Am I not?
Now, you're, 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 Jed's the, you know, abstentia person. I mean, the whole McKinley Road project, he. He decided he was in conflict, so he didn't participate. In the vote because he lived in one of the other buildings. I mean. Come on.
Who would know better?
And there's no bias because he, he paid money to live in one of the buildings that were, I mean Jed, that it's such a cop out and look what it created. I mean, you could go back and say, you know what, if. If Jed did not abstain and, and did what his duty.
We wouldn't have any of that.
We wouldn't have any of it. Exactly. But no, because.
Say no balls or do I have to edit that?
You can say no balls, but yeah, Jed's, you know, and then with the.
So you got.
A guy. I, I mean, but.
I, I don't know him from Adam. He hasn't come on the show. All I know is what I see, right?
So, well, that's exactly.
Okay. So it seems to me like.
And I believe his term's coming up.
His term's coming up, right? Another alderman, one person. So he just seems like to me, he, he's one of those guys in a meeting that looks for the negative into something and. Slows it down, throws the monkey wrench.
Throws a wrench, exactly. I mean, look at, look at the turf field. I mean. What, I'm, I'm sorry, what a moronic response.
Did you hear Melanie and him talking off mic?
Oh my God, they, they.
You know, I thought I was trying to be pretty clear that I'm not in favor of 10 and it's too expensive and too big and I wanted something smaller than I thought I meant to eat. I talked to everybody. Ray and Jason and George and era. Support eight, so if it didn't come through, that was. Cause that clearly was what I was hoping.
Would you have gone for something smaller?
Yeah.
What was that about?
I mean, but again, I mean, that's the whole thing. It's like. These people are clueless to what's going on around them. They think they're so superior.
All right. So let's, let's go through the reviews of these aldermen. Okay. So Looby. Looby just. Is like a. Not even wishy washy, just Melanie, what would you? She carries Melanie's bags. How's that? Louis Vuitton bags. Fair enough? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I would say no. I would say she's. Influenced, influenced by people. I mean, it's unfortunate.
Does she think for herself?
I'm sure she does. I mean, she has a business and she does. I think she does. I think it's just. I don't, I don't get it. Don't get it.
All right. I mean, these are just, look, these are our alderman reviews, right?
I, right.
Okay. All right. So. Notes. He seems like a straight up guy. You know. Charisma, could use some charisma, I guess, but whatever. He seems like a, you know.
Knowledgeable. He, he fits the bill. And yeah, I mean, he's a, he's a good alderman, but.
He was one of the guys that voted for. The project, right? So it seems like he. Uh, the McKinley Road?
Yeah.
Right. So, cause he got a, remember when we did the alderman voting? When we put that survey out, he got dinged because. Whatever. All right. So I think notes has balls. I think he'll say it. He's understated. When I say charisma, maybe step up more.
Yeah, but you don't need that. I mean, I guess, but yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I guess it's, well, I, I'm just gonna, you know, more charisma, but you know, look at the ones that are like. Think they have charisma and they're just, you know.
Well, they think.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's like, I'd be sitting there going, I'm not going to say that.
Maybe outs, more outspoken. Okay, whatever. It's easy for me to say. I'm sitting here in my basement.
And it's hard because we don't, we don't see behind the scenes.
Right, right, right.
And all that stuff that they're doing. So I, but I think he's, he, he's got the experience and he knows how the. City works and all that. So yeah, I would agree that he's a good.
Okay. Uh, and then, and then you have Prashlak who he seems to. He's outspoken. He wants to be mayor. Probably notes doesn't want to be mayor. He's. Who knows?
Never know. Yeah.
But, but he, you know, Prashlak, I think he's got stones. So, okay, okay. Well, thumbs up to him. Uh, and then Bushman. I can't. I think he carries the other bags for Melanie.
Yeah, I, I think.
Or Melanie's on his back or something.
I guess I would say that, you know, when you're reviewing aldermen, I guess, like we're doing. The three. And Eileen, I mean. Come on, there, there's not a review. They, they all should have stepped down. I mean, it's, what happened is. You know. It's in litigation now. I mean, it's just, here's my review. Step down, just like Tom Ford said. You know, it's, it's true. I mean, it's, you know. Again, back to the caucus, those people are kind, I think Bushman's done. And I think Melanie's done.
Yeah.
And Jennifer's done. I think. And I think the only one left is Eileen, but. I mean, that's, that should be, the caucus should be saying, we can't put up with. What you guys did. And you know, whether they come back through as running for mayor or something. They should not be allowed to, when you create this kind of angst. In the city for the taxpayers. Whether you're a nice person or not, you screwed up and you know.
Well, it's integrity.
There's no coming back. I mean, let, let's say they want to run for mayor. I mean, are you really going to vote? For. Those people, but then again, you know, if they come through mayor, it's going to be up to the caucus.
Yeah. And those guys. Oh my God.
I guess reviewing them, I, it's hard to review in my opinion because they traded a lawsuit.
Well.
The four of them.
Then it's my review of what I'm watching. Cause I'm trying to. Get what's going on and now I'm starting to see, cause look. The thing hits the tribune, you pay attention to it. Hopefully the attorney general's, you know, paying attention to it, but. Uh, but we also want to give credit to the guys, cause look, again, they're not coming on, so we have to make our own judgments, right? Okay, so. Uh, Mel- Melanie.
It's fair to say when you're watching the. I mean, it's like not much judgment to really make, like really? Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah. And that, and then you do something behind the scenes with, with. The Woodlands people and then you come in and you screw them. Dad, I, you know what? Our friend that was pissed, I, I, I get it now. I get, I didn't, didn't know, didn't know. Let's swing back over, let's finish up the review with Melanie. So. Her husband was a mayor, power hungry, ego driven and. Thinks, things don't apply to her, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know her personally, but her.
I, I just from what I see and read.
Speak, yeah, and speak kind of loudly, it sounds like, looks like she's kind of the mastermind of all this stuff. I don't know if that's true or not, but. That's how it appears in all this, so. You know, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure, sure she wants to be mayor. I mean.
All right. So there's your alderman and. Good luck Lake Forest. Oh, and alderman, you don't like what we said? The invitation is right.
Well, you forgot a couple aldermen.
Oh, did I? Who'd I forget?
Forgot. Era.
Oh, Era.
One, two, three, four, five. I'm trying to count them all. There's eight.
So maybe we forgot Era.
Era.
Era, did you see him holding that hose? He's, he's pretty good with a hose. He's at the fire department. He's, he's no stranger handling a hose, I'll tell you.
Yeah, he.
Era, he seems like a good guy, you know.
He's a good guy. I know there's.
It seems like he's got a little passive aggressive going on in those meetings. He could step forward a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. He, he, I think he does a good job. He's, I mean, I think it's tough though. I mean, like I said, you could just see that the tension. You know, when, when each of them are talking, it's, it's, it's kind of, you know.
Nails on the chalkboard.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, looking at the interpersonal skills is when you're, you're looking at each alderman as another one's talking and you know.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Or listening when they leave their mic on.
We're so impolite to one another.
But you can kind of tell, I mean. Just your, you know, folded arms and never smiling, these guys kind of, it's like. You know, there's crap going behind the scenes, but it's a hard. Position to volunteer for. I mean, it's not like it's. Easy, but I think. People walk into this stuff wanting to do it and think that there's not a lot of work to be.
Title, they want the influence, but they, you know, the foundation in order. You got to be.
Well, that's the whole thing. And that's why I think there's, there's quite, there's a majority of leaders on there. There's a minority that aren't and followers and you know, well, you see what happens and.
Well, here, who are the leaders then?
I, I think Prashlak, I think Era's one. I, I think notes. He's a good guy. I think. He, he could be, but again, he's a newer alderman, so I'm sure he's taking kind of the backseat right now.
It's a newcomers club anyways, the caucus, so.
But. You know, let's see. I mean, there's a lot, like I said, like, you know.
No, that's fair enough. And it's, that's, then you run into, that's three guys, right?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Female.
I think Eileen. Means well and wants to do well. And I think she again was just kind of. Thrust into it and really wasn't prepared or ready for that position, but I'm sure was told, hey, listen, you know, follow your footsteps, dad's footsteps.
Yeah, her dad was in. Was he mayor?
I don't, I, yeah, I don't think he, no, he was.
I mean, you run a business. Oh, he's alderman? Well, you figure, well, she didn't start the business, so that's a whole nother thing. It's one thing to start a business and one thing to continue.
But I, I, I just think it was that, you know, I mean. And, and you can't have all leaders too. I mean, that creates a.
That's a great tension. I mean, you have a bunch of alphas, but. You gotta have alphas with integrity and seems like it's lacking, so.
Well, and, and you can't have pseudo alphas, people who think they're alphas.
You can say you're an alpha, but you're not. You know.
Well, look at, look at, I mean, they're not. I mean, it's, you know, but again, I think it's also, I mean. Lack of understanding of. The process and all that. I mean, look at the people that. And we talked about this before, that have created this. They have no background in. City government or, you know, boards and commissions and how the, the, the city operates. So they kind of wing it.
Well, Sco, you've been around 58 years or in climbing, no offense.
Hopefully fifty-nine.
Is this a. Is this unique, like this group here, or is this always been going on, this crap?
Now, I, I think it's, it's, it's. Unique in the sense that I, you know, lawsuits and all that, but I, I think it's.
Yeah, that's a big.
It's always. Yeah, I mean, there's always, I mean, but you can go back 20 plus years and, you know. Here's the thing, you don't have to live here for 58 years. You can just look at the history. And look at all the crap in the last 20 plus years that has been denied. You know, progress in the city. So I mean. You know, is this, is it? The same? You know, it's different, but again, I mean, it's, I think the, the. The blocking of progress, yeah, that, that seems to be repetitive. Type of thing, when you go backwards and you look at, you know, Costco and all this other stuff and. You know, but the, but on the flip side, there's been wonderful things done with the city. It's just, I just think there's a lot more. I guess the old guard is, is in this community isn't as strong as it used to be. And there, there's a lot of newer people, which is great. But I think a lot of these people bring in, you know, I want to do it this way and.
Well, it's fine, but step up and be a leader and. Welcome to the Lake Forest Podcast, a podcast about the lovely city of Lake Forest, featuring topics like local news, sports, music, people, food, and then occasionally politics. My name is Pete and I'm joined with the voice of the Lake Forest High School Basketball, Football, Lacrosse, Water Polo.
No water polo.
Walker, how you doing Sco?
I'm doing good, Pete. How are you?
Been two weeks, my friend, and it's Friday.
That's right, two weeks.
It's been two weeks.
Get some more content to start babbling about.
Well, there is some, some good stuff out there and. You know, our, our fine city council gives us plenty, plenty. But before we get to it, hey, Lake Forest Podcast is supported by Shark Guy Beach Fishing, the premier South Florida beach fishing experience out of Longbow Key, Florida. Their world renowned captains not only put you on the fish, but to help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out on Facebook or at sharkguybeachfishing.com and schedule an outing. Shark Guy is my guy for your next charter. Disclaimer, Sco doesn't charter. We also got a Shark Guy outdoors. You want to find a fossil? Boom. They'll find us out there one day, Sco.
Ah, I'll be in Florida. Yeah, never know.
Hey. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our patron supporters. Reverend Lou back from the church of the Holy Spirit. At School of Rocks paying off. Matt A, Elizabeth B, Coastal Lance, Otto, R D M, Broadstop Breakfast Group in Kenosha. Captain Mike's in downtown Kenosha and the Greentown Tavern in Waukegan. Three places I gotta go eat. Okay, Sco. Busy, sort of a busy week, sort of a busy week, and just going to quickly go down my notes here and then you can. You know, it's like a speed bump, right?
Hard to do it.
All right. So started the beginning of the week with the, the Woodlands. Tennis courts, they had a little meeting. I put a little post up that.
I saw those.
Uh, Woodlands eight. Lake Forest neighbors zero.
Tough one.
That was, that, that was a tough one and. But it was kind of, it was nice to see. You had people torn against, come up there and say, say their piece. Whichever side you're on. I respect whoever went up there, you know what I mean? Cause you, you're going in front of people, you're going on camera and idiots like me can, you know, watch it. But.
I, I didn't watch it. I was doing a lacrosse game, but I didn't view the playback.
Um, so now. One of the things that people don't pay attention to these. Council things is they're like, you know, a couple hours long and nobody wants to watch anything for a couple hours. So you gotta go in and. You gotta edit. You gotta take a couple. Minutes here, five minutes there, and then you run the risk of losing contacts, but. I don't think you could lose any contacts with Mayor George on.
Immediately impacted by this.
Uh, please, please sit down.
Nope.
Please sit down.
We wanted to show you 25 feet and 10.
This is unacceptable.
Why is this unacceptable, Mr. Mayor?
We have public comment. We, one person speaks at a time. We don't have demonstrations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're so impolite to one another.
You know.
Yeah.
I, I have never seen him that fired up, have you?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I think it was a lot of carryover when that one lady got up there, carryover from. The. McKinley Road project. I believe she was the one that was.
Oh, did not know that.
Um, let go. By Mayor George. He was on the HPC and. Felt that she was, you know, far superior and more of a preservationist than anyone else in the. City and. Overstepped her bounds and I think. Her showing up there kind of.
Well, they had their court date this week too.
Oh, did they?
The McKinley Road project, whatever. I don't know. You go in and you, uh, it got pushed to next month, so it's a good thing we didn't go this month. I might try next month. You know, hey, alderman, if you're all there. I might be there if you want to, if you want to do an interview with me, I might show up.
I think she showing up just kind of. Got the, the past stirred up a little bit. But again, I mean, he, you know. I think he was probably a little bit out of line.
Well, for a guy that doesn't. I'm, I'm learning more as time goes on, but I had no idea who that was. It was like. I forgot, what, what's the lady's name that came on and did the interview with us?
Kari.
Yeah, okay.
Johnsons.
Yeah, so she went up there.
And I, I can tell you after listening to all this and Kathy's dissertation. I, I am really angry now. I am not for this.
Kind of put a smile on her face. Little bit more th- than she did, but whatever, you know, somebody's putting.
I mean, I, I understand where they're coming from. I mean, you're putting five tennis courts up against their backyard. I mean, that's. You know. I mean.
Well, you're selling, you know what I mean? You're, you're selling.
No, you, no, not, you're not, they weren't selling anything. It was already.
It was already decided, but.
Yeah.
Well, you're trying to, you know, opinions anyways. What, the way, what I got out of it was. She wanted to show, which I didn't think was cool, that she couldn't use those monitors to show what 25 feet looked like. Cause I think that's what she, that her partner, whoever that person was that. Did whatever. They had a, a measuring tape. And they were starting to go and show what 25 feet looks like. And then Mayor George, I mean, it was like. Somebody put in both keys. And the lodge code, whoosh.
Uh, yeah, again.
Uh, please, please sit down.
Nope.
Please sit down.
We wanted to show you 25 feet and 10.
This is unacceptable.
Why is this unacceptable, Mr. Mayor?
We have public comment. We, one person speaks at a time. We don't have demonstrations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, you're not demonstrating, I mean, he was kind of right. You're not supposed to be demonstrating anything and public. Feedback, you're supposed to. You know, say your piece in three minutes and move on and, you know, I just think it's. You know. Once again, it's, you know, I believe it's that lady who, you know, feels she is superior to everything and Tom sure she told, you know, Kari, like, hey, you know. I'll get up there and, you know, this is, we, we can do this, you know.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, I just. It, it. George just kind of lost his mind, but you know what? To be honest with you. You know, the, the crap that's going on, the dysfunction on the council and all that, it's coming to a head. I mean. It's just, you know, you got one, all, you know, these aldermen that supposedly were. Meeting with, you know, Kari and the neighbors and, you know, quote unquote, throwing their support behind them and then they come, you know. City council and.
Oh, so they're toothpaste.
Support. Yeah. At least that's what I've been, you know, my understanding is that, you know. But again, I mean, it's like, you know, all these, all these. Well, you know, the thing is that because they think they're politicians. Come on, Pete. I mean, it's like, you know. You got Melanie Rumel who, you know, just unique. Doesn't show up to certain meetings when it's kind of like. You know, afraid that that's, you know, she has to confront her.
Is that where the sickness came from?
I guess. But. You know, she's out there trying, she wants to, I mean, there's no secret about it. She, she.
You know, if you're going to call in, not show up for school, you got to at least sound a little sick.
I mean, it's a joke. I mean, it's like you can't, you're, you're an alderman. I mean, it's like, show up to the meeting. If the meeting's in person, show up. I mean, don't give me this, I'm sick type of thing. And, but you know, she's, she wants to be mayor and you know, there's a mayoral. Thing coming up next year and, you know, it's all this kind of jockeying for position and, you know, there's clearly dysfunction. I mean. Anytime aldermen, three aldermen create a lawsuit for the city by their own stupidity.
Dollars.
Through their own stupidity, there's got to be, you know, internal strife. You know, I mean, it's crazy that your, your legacy as an alderman is that you. You created a lawsuit for the city. I mean. Come on, I mean, you're not, that's not what we're voting these people in for. We're voting them in to help the city progress and, you know. Help the city staff do their job. I mean, it's just, you know, it's all this. BS that these people thinking they're, you know, these big politicians and. You know, it's going to be interesting when, I think it's next year that. You know, there's some aldermen coming up for. Reappointment, the mayor's coming up, so it's going to be interesting to see. But. Yeah, I just. And on top of it, you know, come on, you, you really think, let's be honest. You know, a lawsuit was created. I don't know what the outcome's going to be because three aldermen decided to take. decided to take matters into their own hand, own hands, and look what it's created. Do you think these guys are gonna be, you know, even wanting to get involved in something even like this, that uh,
You know.
You know, possible lawsuits, you know, every time you make, try to make a decision. So of course they're gonna, they're gonna uh, they're gonna, they're gonna side now on, on, you know, all these issues that come up on the, the more powerful, um, you know,
What?
petitioner.
Why are they wasting time? I mean, that's lawsuit. They're not gonna sue. They're gonna drop it. Just let me build my damn building, right? So what, you think they'll keep it going? Oh.
I don't, I, I didn't say that, but you know, I mean, hell. I mean, this is impacting people's livelihood.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it, it, I don't know. I mean, it'll be interesting to see what the, the judgment comes up with, but I mean, you know, these people have done some pretty dumb things and, you know, I, I don't know how, or if that's what's gonna happen, but I mean, I gotta imagine there's gonna be something. I mean, right? I mean, they're either gonna build a building or not.
It's called repercussions, cause when you, we have bad actors, there has to be repercussions. Whether it's the Attorney General, cause somebody's gotta say, you know what? Don't do that again, or you're gonna get, you know.
Well, the funniest, the funniest thing is, you know, it's like, uh, it's funny you mentioned repercussions because my whole thing is, like, these three did this with the McKinley Road Project. They know they were wrong. I mean, first off, how can you even think that you're not? But they got caught. And then on top of it, there was another project coming through, the, the turf fields that they kinda did the same thing, trying to push that again, you know? So it's like, you know, what are the repercussions for these people that are, we vote into office and, you know, decide they're gonna do it their own way and are, you know, or gather the, enough of the other voting aldermen to go on their side. I mean, this, that's, that's not what this is about. I mean, it, it's, I mean, it's, it's, you know, that whole Woodlands, the back to that Woodlands thing, I mean, it's just, it is what it is. It's a, it's a rare weird thing because Woodlands Academy is a uh, SUP as it is. So I, I don't know how they are gonna sub, and I don't know how they were gonna get by that, the residents anyways. But, but again, I mean, I guess my take on that was, Woodlands does have space up by their fields where they could put those courts. And be, just being a good neighbor. I mean, that's the whole thing. I mean, when you're sharing a neighborhood, you know, if the neighbors are upset about it, you should work with them at least to figure out how we can make everyone happy. And I guess that just didn't happen.
Well.
I don't, I don't know on the other side, the neighbor side, like if they're nasty to them or not, or whatever, but it's just weird that there's no kind of, it was just kind of, everyone dug their feet in and said, I'm not budgeted, but.
Well, and then I also see where, hey man, you bought a house next to a school.
Right.
What? Okay, sup, sup with that?
Well, and here's my thing, I'm gonna defend everyone on that issue on Hyview is, yeah, they bought a house next to a school and the backyard was never, you know, the backyard of those people's houses, you know, they looked out at a parking lot and uh, two tennis courts that were buried back behind brush. And for how many years have never, you know, talked about putting five? Now, they're trying to, you know, be a part of the IHSA and, you know, that comes with progress. But again, I mean, be a nice neighbor and if you got the land, which they do, which doesn't impact anyone.
Yeah.
I don't get that, but you know, who knows? What happened behind the scenes? I don't know, but um, looks like it's, it's gonna happen.
I hope, I'd love to hear what happened, you know, behind the scenes if anybody wants.
But, but again, I mean, I, you know, as they go through. Well, I mean, as they go through the process, if Woodlands screws up or something.
We're not talking another lawsuit, are we?
Oh, I don't know. No, I'm saying if Woodlands screws up or they don't do things that they're supposed to do, then yeah, that can be brought back to the city council and, you know, so who knows? I mean, hopefully it all just works out, but um.
Alright, getting back to the Woodlands meeting and uh, the eruption of uh, Mount George.
Why is this unacceptable, Mr. Mayor?
We have public comment.
What's the lady's name? Kathy? Who runs the, uh, the lady that goes up to.
Zerniac.
Zerniac, okay. Now she's the one behind the scenes on everything, I think, cause uh,
Yeah, she's, she's head of all that and um,
She needed my help.
knowledgeable person in the city.
Cause the minute that, that measuring tape came out, she popped up. I could see her working the door at Mother's with me back in the day.
Comment. We, one person speaks at a time. We don't have demonstrations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She, she escorted, she escorted him out in like two seconds. That was pretty good. So Kathy, uh, hats off to you, but uh, couldn't they have just muted the mic and, you know?
Yeah, you can't. I, I mean, it's
You can't, alright.
A public uh, you know, public comment and, you know, public comment, you can't demonstrate, so.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, George, George.
I don't think it was all totally that, that they wanted to pull out a measuring tape and show 25 feet. I mean, I think there was.
Did you see my post where I actually put 25 feet up? People didn't get what I was trying to do. Mayor, we want to show you what 25 feet look like. Here's one, here's two.
I mean, that was comical. I, I think he kind of went a little overboard, but, but then again.
George, I hear you, man.
It's, it's all kind of overboard. I mean, you know.
I would've done, I would've done worse.
His legacy, you know.
Get your ass, get your ass out of here. Um, alright, Scoo, let's move on to something a little bit more productive here. Uh, uh, we had uh, Joe Sever, uh, Joe Severino, he's running for Congress in the town district. Good guy, Cicero guy. Uh, there's a, a political podcast for those that like, would like it to be taken a step further. We try not to do that here, Scoo, you know what I mean? Cause, you know, you got both sides. We try to talk to both sides. But uh, on the political podcast, uh, center right radio, we had Joe come on and, and he's running against Brad Schneider. It's nice to hear some of Joe's stories, cause uh, you know, he didn't really get anything handed to him and it's nice to see uh, the Chicago, uh, really south side Chicago slash Cicero guy come up. Uh, I hope he beats that Deerfield uh, guy. So I thought that was kinda interesting.
That was a good podcast. No, I don't know. Well, he was on our podcast. I know that. I wasn't on it, but.
Yeah.
He had him last year, but um, yeah, no, it's great. There's people out there running and contesting the, and.
You know, when I'm talking about charisma, it's like you have to, there's a, there is a skill to tell somebody to F off and they don't know you said it, and I don't have that skill and uh,
Nor do I.
Ne- never, never will. Uh, hey Catherine, so Joe, keep fighting out there, man. Uh, Catherine Lummer, six years at the library.
Nice.
Catherine. See, before we all got, you know, people heard of us, she came on the show, we talked about her. Do you remember those days? Were you around for that?
Yeah, I was around for that. Yeah, we, that was a great uh, podcast we had on with her.
Catherine, my uh, library card is expired. I don't suppose you could just renew it for me, would you? Uh, probably not. Uh, just.
Another show is talking about the library remodel.
Oh my God, who's, that's, I kinda think that's the big one. Everything else is a red herring and then people are gonna come on.
The dome sheath, the sheath on the dome.
I, I like that hefty backup there. Can we put our logo? Can we sponsor that? Catherine, can we put it?
I got, I got some sponsors for that sheet.
Oh my God, that, that, that uh, library condom, how much longer is that gonna be up there?
Oh God, who knows? I mean.
When should we start paying attention to that? We were, we were crabbing about it last year and I kinda forgot. I'm sure the, you think that's.
I, I think, uh, I think the uh, the fields uh, trumped the uh, library because they're all vying for the same bucket of money and I think uh, the um, the turf fields won out in that battle. So who knows what um, when the library's gonna, but again, I think, I mean, I mean, they got a lot of dough they could put into it already, so they should.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, what do you think the green meanies are gonna hop on to? They've been kinda quiet lately. It's probably, it's probably been a little too rainy for them to come out and play.
You don't realize that, yeah. The, the rain is like, oh wow, that's uh, I guess they were right when they're saying. No water. Well, what happens, yeah?
What's?
Or their neighbors have been screaming because it's been raining and their poor kids can't play any sports.
Yeah.
Well, I guess they were right, what they were talking about.
So uh, what's the latest lawn sign? The lawn sign radar, anything coming up?
God, who knows? I, I'm still in, in favor of putting up a pick up your poop. Had another, another one in my yard the other day when I was cutting the grass.
You know?
I'm sitting here and I wish the people would walk by and have their dogs dump in my lawn while I'm here, not when I'm not here, but uh.
I know you're a big fan of technology. Uh, I'm sure you wanna have a ring or a nest up there, a camera to uh, capture that?
Yeah. No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Fissed off when I step in it when I'm cutting the lawn.
Stepping it, what if it hits the mower, man? You got crap everywhere. It's almost like a city council meeting.
No, it's, it's because it's a little, these little tiny shit dogs. Um, you know, so it's tiny, so it gets sucked up in the, in the thing, but.
Oh, customer service.
But um, yeah, no, that's, that's uh, I don't know any other stuff coming up.
Hail damage, be right there.
But uh, no.
You can just mute the phone for the show. I've just, even though I do appreciate the authenticity of it, it's fantastic.
There, I just did. Well, Fourth of July is coming up, so I'm sure there's gonna be yard signs for that.
Uh, I wanna get to Fourth of July. Before I get to Fourth of July, this weekend, we get all the proms, the graduation.
Yeah.
Uh, big, big shout out, Jack Dohany. Uh, one of his safety dates came through. Yeah, he's, 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 he's going uh, Northwestern. He what?
Did he get his tux at Smith?
Uh, yeah, I wonder. I wonder. Where does a big guy get a tux at?
Smith.
Smith, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't, those two guys, they liked us at the beginning when they were starting out. Now it's like, we're on the pay no mind list.
They had uh, hundreds of tux in there last week. People coming and getting, oh my God, yeah.
So Smith does, Smith does tuxes. Okay. Did not know that. Okay.
For all.
He what?
For all.
For all. Well, can you say people anymore?
That's why I said people. I mean, you know.
No, I don't think you can say people anymore.
I just did.
Alright, well.
Anyone that wants to wear a tux.
Pete didn't say people. Uh.
How do you do that? Do you, do, you know, you go to prom and everyone wears a tux now, or what?
I, I, I don't know. I'll see the pictures this weekend.
Everyone wears dresses.
Jack and the boys, I think the uh, the U lines, they're gonna have a little uh, uh, graduation party out there. So power to the peeps out there, man. Wait.
Yeah, they got it all set up on the front lawn and uh, drove by there yesterday and.
Yeah. Think we can sneak by for a burger?
Hmm, probably could.
Yeah.
Who are you?
Well, they're not listening.
I'm Jack Dohany's dad. Give me three.
I'm just picking up poop. No, kudos to Jack. Kudos to Mary Dohany graduated from Notre Dame. You know how I, you know how you know somebody graduated from Notre Dame? They'll tell you.
Right. And, and so will all the uh, Domers and then Alumna.
So, so congrats out to them. And all the Lake Forest, uh, the high school, the Woodlands, the uh, Lake Forest Academies, uh, what about the Juco's? Lake County College, those are my kinda peeps. Lake Forest College, all that.
Yeah, Lake Forest College, I think it was last week.
Jamari Tansmore. I think I got your name right that time. Congrats all. Now, it's a great time of year while schools are still around. Okay. Now let's talk about the Fourth of July, Scoo. What are we gonna do? We gotta start planning. Are we gonna go in the parade? Are we gonna do popcorn again? Uh,
That was my forest day. We do popcorn.
That's not the same thing?
Fourth of July is a parade in Lake Bluff.
Oh, I think I gotta be in that.
That's gonna be a big one. Like this is a full, full on since the old COV ID.
I've been invited to participate. I thought it was the same thing.
No. Lake Forest only, only, Lake Forest has the Fourth of July is the um, concert and the fireworks.
Well, I think the Lake Forest Day, I think we should be part of that. You, you call that a parade, right? When it goes through town? Can we do that instead of the popcorn? And if so, can we get uh, some of the, you know, the Jack Dohany's of the world to uh, push us around in an office chair through the parade?
Sure.
At Aaron Deck?
Oh my God. Order, order the popcorn. Yeah.
Well, can we throw popcorn balls?
Well, that's gonna be, I, that's my 40th uh, reunion is that weekend.
They can all show up.
Oh, I might be marching in the parade with my, my high school class.
Oh man, so I gotta run the popcorn machine with Pam?
That's right.
Can I, can we push the popcorn machine around?
We, I probably could.
Alright, alright, so it's up for debate. Okay, so Lake, Lake Forest Day and then the Lake Forest Bluff. I know I'm doing the bluff with uh, Mr. Mets. Mr. Mets is a very popular fellow in town. I'm hearing that more, oh yeah, very. I just wish you would have some opinions, you know? I wish you would go out on a ledge and really give opinions.
He seems kind of like non-committal. I don't know. I've listened to a couple of podcasts, but um, seems non-committal. He's gotta kinda, you gotta kinda take that.
You gotta drag it out of them. Uh, but you know, sometimes there's some collateral damage from, you know, that I get off of that, but uh, you know, that's fine. But for the people.
Why is he, why do you call the center right when he seems more center left?
Uh, you just.
Just asking for, for him.
Well, he, he does like to wear the donkey shirts. Um, but uh, you know, Scoo, I, I try to hear all sides, I really do. And when I hear all sides, you know, you may not change my opinion and I'll call you dumb anyways, but I, I reserve all rights. Uh, but anyways, Scoo, you got anything else you wanna bring up?
Uh, no, it's pretty uh, pretty quiet.
Yeah, okay.
Some was common and.
People love this, you know, hear from us, you know.
We'll have to drag some uh, businesses or someone. No?
We ain't dragging nothing. They don't wanna come on, that's fine. They can just sit back in their uh, jacuzzis and uh, listen and watch us. Alright, we thank you all for listening to the Lake Forest Podcast. Please subscribe to us on YouTube. That little action, Scoo, takes three people from learning the truth about the Lake Forest Alderman from three to 3,000. Please subscribe. And we also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. We have, well, Shark Guy, Shark Guy Beach Fishing. You heard of him, Scoo? The premier South Florida beach fishing experience out of Longbow Key, Florida. Their world renowned captains not only put you on the fish, but to help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out on Facebook.
He wear a shark suit?
Uh, no, I think the shark suit wears him. Uh, if you've seen some of the videos, uh, to schedule an outing. Shark Guy is Pete's guy for your next charter. Again, Scoo doesn't charter and check out Shark Guy Outdoor if you wanna find a couple fossils besides me and Scoo. I'd like to thank our Patreon supporters. Reverend Lou back from the Church of the Holy Spirit. Matt A, Elizabeth B, Coastal Lance, Otto, RDM, Broadstop Breakfast Group in Kenosha, Captain Mike's downtown Kenosha, and the Greentown Tavern in Waukegan. I swear one of these days, we'll come out there and grub out. We thank you for listening. On behalf of my fine co-host, Scoo Walker. I swear one of these days we'll come out there and grub out. We thank you for listening on behalf of my fine co-host, Sco Walker.